Good afternoon. Welcome to the September 11th, 2025 work session of the Hemarico County School Board. We will begin our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Dr. Grant.
Please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing for a moment of silence. Thank you. You may be seated.
Thank you, Dr. Grant. Colleagues, the first item on our agenda is the approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move that the school board approve the agenda for today's meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Moved by Mr. Young. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Irving. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. The agenda has been approved. The next item on our agenda is to move into closed session. Colleagues, is there a motion?
I move that the school board go into closed session for the discussion of matters covered under items A1 and A2 of Section 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia 1950 as amended pertaining to the assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific school board employees, the request for religious exemption from compulsory attendance that would involve the disclosure of information contained in scholastic records concerning individual students.
Moved by Ms. Atkins. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Cancela. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. We are now in closed session. We will resume our open meeting at its conclusion. Welcome back. And colleagues, do you have a certification of closed session?
I move that the school boards certify by a recorded vote that to the best of each school board member's knowledge, only public matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and identified in the motion authorizing the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed meeting.
Moved by Mr. Irving. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Young. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Closed session has been certified. Superintendent?
Right. For the first item, I am requesting the board's approval of religious exemptions for cases number 25-26-RE-3, as well as 25-26-RE-4, and 25-26-RE-5, again for bona fide religious beliefs, and their names are protected under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act.
Colleagues, is there a motion?
I move that the school board approve the request for religious exemption from compulsory attendance for student case numbers 25-26-RE-3, 25-26-RE-4, and 25-26-RE-5.
Moved by Mr. Young. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Atkins. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. The religious exemptions have been approved.
Thank you. Members of the board, the next item I have is to seek your approval for the administrative appointment.
Colleagues, is there a motion?
I move that the school board approve the appointment of the administrative personnel.
Moved by Mr. Irving. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Cancela. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. The administrative appointment has been approved.
Thank you, members of the board. You have approved Amy Johnson as the next Director of Student Support and Wellness. All right, for the next item, under operations, the board will receive a presentation related to your requests for some potential adjustments to attendance zones, looking at enrollments and development, and the impact of the 2022 bond projects. Ms. Thayer will come forward to provide that presentation.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Cashwell. Today, I will be presenting the board with various scenarios that respond to your August 28th request for potential boundary adjustments. As a reminder, school spaces fall within Journey to 2030's focus area of learning environment, with the goal of all students and staff learning and working in safe, welcoming, and innovative spaces. Before we look at the specific boundary scenarios you requested, we will quickly review last school year's enrollment. While numbers fluctuate throughout the year, the division had 49,405 students enrolled as of the official counts reported in the fall of 2024. The division also calculated a functional capacity of 57,792 for the entire division spread across our 67 traditional campuses. This means about 85% of our current capacity is being utilized. For this presentation, we will be using the 2024-25 school year enrollment figures, as the current school year enrollment counts will not be finalized until after September 30th. As our 2025-26 enrollment is finalized later this fall, the figures for each scenario will be updated. Before moving on, I want to add two important reminders about enrollment and functional capacity. First, students don't come to us in neat blocks, meaning that any enrollment impacts from a potential adjustment at an individual school will be spread across grade levels in different ways. Second, a building is designed to operate at 100% functional capacity. In addition to understanding the functional capacity within HCPS, we are also mindful of broader demographic trends and their impact on K-12 enrollment. This map, which was shared with you last winter, is from the Walden Cooper Center at UVA, which provides projected enrollment data to school divisions and policymakers in the Commonwealth. It illustrates changes projected for each division between 2023 and 2028. You'll see they predict declining enrollment in many Virginia districts, which aligns to national projections largely based on declining birth rates. They project HCPS will see a decline in enrollment of approximately 3.2% by 2028. This decline is due to the lower birth rates seen in Virginia and throughout the nation. However, as we also shared last winter, HCPS does its own localized projections for future enrollment. In contrast, at this point, HCPS projections have a conservative increase of 1.9% enrollment between 2024 and 2028. As compared to Walden Cooper, HCPS utilizes different assumptions about birth rates, planned residential developments, movement patterns within the state, and trend shifts within schools. Additionally, Walden Cooper has HCPS projected to decline in enrollment between school year 2023-24 and school year 2024-25. However, HCPS increased slightly by about 1%. We were only one of the few divisions in the state to increase in enrollment last year, even by only about 500 students, which is why our projections break from Walden Cooper for long-term projections. In addition to broader demographic trends and zoned enrollment, one of the other major factors that influences capacity in HCPS's schools is the placement and size of various programs and specialty centers. Noted here are some timely and relevant programmatic factors. The new cybersecurity specialty center at Hemarico High will open next fall for 9th graders. It will add additional students each year for the next four years. Additionally, at the high school level, the next years will see a steady increase in the number of seats available as programming expands at all three of the new ACE centers. At the middle school level, the division's first Center for Innovation opened at Rolfe in the fall of 2024, and the second will open at the new Quiacuason Middle School in the fall of 2026. Additionally, the middle year's IB program is in the process of shifting seats from Moody to Takahoe for a more even distribution of NYPD seats at the two schools. Moody will also house the middle school dual-language emergent program in fall of 2027. The program was established at Holiday Elementary, and the original cohort is currently moving through and will attend Moody Middle in the fall of 2027. The program is only open to students zoned for Holiday Elementary and about half are zoned for Moody already. The potential boundary adjustment scenarios prepared for the board include these programmatic considerations, but it should be noted that the various impacts and seats are our best approximations at this time. Board members have articulated goals for their districts and the division at large through policy and statements made at the last board meeting. As staff have drafted scenarios responsive to each board member's requests, we have also kept these goals in mind. We will now turn to the scenarios we developed in response to the board's requests. As you heard during a recent construction project update, the rebuild at Jackson Davis Elementary will add approximately 250 seats when it is complete and is scheduled to open for the 2026-27 school year. This school had a functional capacity of 89.8 in fall of 2024-25. The board requested a scenario to leverage the new capacity at Davis to balance capacity and maximize space utilization at nearby elementary schools. To achieve this, the proposed scenario moves some students from Ridge Elementary to Jackson Davis. In addition, the new space will also allow for additional program to be placed at the school. Here's what that could look like. Elementary students living in Section 1, seen in the map in orange, would be rezoned from Ridge Elementary to Jackson Davis Elementary. This section of the map includes Brinkhaven, Parham Hills, and Westdale Estates neighborhoods. Section 2 on the map, seen in the teal stripes near the center, encompasses Pine Creek Village. Students in that neighborhood would also move from Ridge Elementary to Jackson Davis. And finally, there are three parcels in Section 3 on the map, in the small purple stripe section of the map at the very tip of where the orange and green meet. This area would be rezoned from Ridge Elementary to Three Chopped Elementary. These parcels do not currently have any students living in them, and this would be a preemptive measure for pupil transportation purposes. This is a bird's eye view of the areas we are discussing with an overlay of the map for reference. You will note the major roadways here are I-64, North Parham Road, and Three Chopped Road. This chart shows the potential enrollment impacts for both Jackson Davis and Ridge Elementary Schools, and the balanced enrollment that results from the proposal. In this scenario, Jackson Davis will gain roughly 72 students, and Ridge will lose those 72. The estimated enrollment at Jackson Davis is 584 students, at 77%. And for Ridge, the estimated enrollment is 422 students, and the functional capacity is approximately 76%. These estimated impacts are based on the 2024-25 numbers for these areas, and final impacts may look slightly different. Again, Section 3 currently does not have any students, and while these parcels could yield students in the future, those figures are not impactful at this time. RC Longin Elementary is also undergoing a rebuild that will add approximately 250 seats when it is complete and opens for the 2026-27 school year. The school had a functional capacity of 86% in 2024-25. At the request of the board, this scenario proposes leveraging new space at Longin to serve preschool students without a boundary adjustment. This is similar to the approach the board utilized with the new capacity added during the Holiday Elementary renovations. This aligns with the division's strategic focus of expanding preschool programming to students throughout the division over the coming years. When the building is complete, we plan to move a few pre-K classes from Holiday to Longin so that students and their families can be served more conveniently with pre-K closer to their home neighborhoods. Once pre-K classes are added, the functional capacity will be approximately 70%. This also allows for other programming to be shifted into the school in coming years. At the request of Chair Shea, staff looked at the boundaries of Carver Elementary School, which had a functional capacity of 88% in 2024-25. She asked that staff consider a neighborhood south of Patterson Avenue due to its proximity to Carver Elementary and the fact that it is not connected to any other neighborhoods. In this scenario shown on the map, the area shown in orange stripes, the Patterson West neighborhood, would move from Mayberry Elementary to Carver Elementary. Here's the map overlay for the area we are talking about as part of this preliminary adjustment. In this scenario, an estimated nine students are projected to move from Mayberry to Carver with no significant impact to functional capacity at either school. At the middle school level, Chair Shea also asked staff to look specifically at the potential to address feeder pattern cohesion on the same timeline as the opening of the new Quiacuason Building. Scheduled to open in the 2027-28 school year, the new Quiacuason will have an additional 100 seats, which will help QMS house the division's second middle school center for innovation, which will serve a total of 150 students across all grade levels when fully implemented in the 2028-29 school year. In this scenario, staff looked at elementary to middle school feeder patterns and prepared a scenario to reduce the number of feeder elementaries into Quiacuason, as well as reduce the number of high schools that QMS feeds. This potential boundary adjustment would involve four sections and is a bit more complicated than the previous elementary scenarios, as it involves moving students both into and out of Quiacuason, Takahoe, and Pocahontas Middle Schools. Section 1, seen in the blue stripe area in the bottom center, includes moving students in the Brandon, Deer Lodge, Moreland West, and Sleepy Hollow neighborhoods, who are currently zoned for Takahoe Middle into Quiacuason Middle. Students in Section 2, seen in the orange stripe area near I-64, would move students from Quiacuason to Takahoe. This includes Andover Hills, Mayland Towns, Pemberton Oaks, and Westbrier. This scenario also moves students living in Section 3, the crossings at Short Pump, from Quiacuason to Pocahontas Middle. This boundary adjustment is shown as the smaller purple striped area near the top center of the map. Finally, students in the green striped area that we are calling Section 4 would move from Pocahontas into Quiacuason. This includes students living in Cedar Hill, Harbor Cove, Heritage Oaks, and Stone Quarter. This overlay shows the potential boundary adjustment for Section 1. Here you get the view of Section 2. And finally, this overlay shows the potential boundary changes for Section 3 in the upper right corner, and Section 4 at the bottom left of the map. This chart shows the net changes in enrollment and functional capacity for this scenario. Again, each school will have students rezoned in and out. This consolidates feeder patterns by reducing the number of feeder patterns into Quiacuason from seven elementary schools, with Skipworth and Colonial Trail being removed, and Mayberry added. It also moves the entirety of Carver Elementary into Quiacuason Zone, reunifying that feeder pattern under one middle school. For the middle and high school feeder patterns, it reduces the number of high schools that QMS feeds into from three high schools down to two, with Tucker being removed. In total, through boundary adjustments in the new Center for Innovation, Quiacuason is projected for a net gain of 201 students, placing it around 85.6% functional capacity. Takahoe Middle, through the potential boundary adjustments and the changes already underway to shift IB NYPD seats from Moody to Takahoe to better balance them out, has a projected net gain of 227 students, placing it at around 99% functional capacity. And Pocahontas Middle School would have a net reduction in enrollment of 173 students, placing it at 74% functional capacity. Continuing with middle schools, Ms. Cancela requested staff review redistricting options for Moody Middle School to further change the balance between students that are zoned for Moody and the students that attend the IB middle years program there. This supplements programmatic changes that went into effect for 6th graders beginning this school year to shift IB NYPD seats from Moody to Takahoe Middle. Additionally, she requested staff consider neighborhood proximity to Moody, Brooklyn, and Wilder. Section 1, seen in the blue stripe area to the right of the map, includes moving students in the Afton, Azalea Court, and Huntington Place neighborhoods, who are currently zoned for Moody into Wilder Middle. Students in Section 2, seen in the orange stripe area found off of Staples Mill, would move from their zoned school of Brooklyn into Moody Middle. This section includes neighborhoods such as Bonnie Bray, Glenside Woods, and Tuscan Heights. This scenario also moves students living in Section 3, the purple area near I-64, and would move those students from Brooklyn into Moody as well. This includes DeVista Park, Greendale Forest, Rosemont, and Worcester Woods neighborhoods. This is an aerial view of these three sections. For this scenario, assuming it is implemented in the 2027-28 school year, the net changes in enrollment and functional capacity are shown for Moody, Wilder, and Brooklyn. In total, through boundary adjustments, introduction of the first grade level cohort in the dual language emergent program, and the already in process shifting of IB NYPD seats, Moody is estimated for a net gain of 154 students, placing it at around 102.7% functional capacity. The dual-language emergent program is expected to grow by 40 seats in the two subsequent years as students matriculate through. Thus, functional capacity, as seen here, will change. Through additional IB NYPD changes, would also see a change in total functional capacity, as is seen in the following phased approach. Wilder Middle has an estimated net gain of 81 students, placing it at around 80.6% functional capacity. And Brooklyn Middle School would have an estimated net reduction in enrollment of 300 students, placing it at 53.4% functional capacity. Acknowledging that this scenario presents capacity challenges, Ms. Cancela also requested to see this scenario in a phased approach. These next few slides explore what a phased approach over a two-year period could potentially look like. For Phase 1, the moves for Sections 1 and 2 would occur in the same year. These are the same sections that were just discussed in the prior scenario. This involves moving Section 1, seen in the blue area, out of Moody and into Wilder, and moving Section 2, seen in the orange stripe area, from Brooklyn into Moody. For Phase 2, this would see Section 3 moving from Brooklyn to Moody. As you can see on the map, the Phase 1 moves were already reflected in the new boundaries for Brooklyn, Moody, and Wilder. For this phased approach to this scenario, the net changes in enrollment and functional capacity are shown for Moody, Wilder, and Brooklyn, broken out by year. For Phase 1, which is assumed to be the 2026-27 school year, the chart reflects Sections 1 and 2 moving in their respective areas, with a continuation of the IB seat shifting from Moody to Takahoe Middle. This brings Moody to 92.4% functional capacity, Wilder to 80.6, and Brooklyn to 62.6. For Phase 2, which is assumed to be the 2027-28 school year, a second chart is shown. This chart reflects the estimated total enrollment at Moody and Brooklyn after both phases are complete. This chart shows Section 3, which is a portion of Johnson Elementary, moving from Brooklyn to Moody. It includes IB rebalancing seats from Moody to Takahoe, in an effort that is already underway. In order to address capacity, this chart also assumes additional IB seat changes in Year 2, which were not reflected in the prior Slide 24. Finally, it includes the first year of students moving into the DLI program with approximately 40 6th graders. It should be noted, in future years not shown on the slide, an additional 40 DLI students will be added until a total of approximately 120 DLI students are served at Moody, though approximately half of these students are already zoned for Moody. Once both phases are complete in school year 2027-28, Moody is at 99.8% functional capacity, and Brooklyn is at 53.4%. Depending on the actual enrollment of DLI students matriculating through, IB NYPD seats may require further change. Moving on to high schools, Chair Shea requested that staff prepare an option for capacity relief at Douglas S. Freeman High School. Section 1, seen in the orange stripe area at the center of the map, includes moving students in the Candlewood, Gateshead, and Pinedale West neighborhoods from Freeman to Godwin. Section 2, seen in the purple stripe area below Section 1, would move students from the Ednum Forest and Cabin Creek areas from Freeman to Godwin. Section 3 is similar to the area shown in the Carver scenario, with Patterson West moving from Freeman to Godwin, as seen in the green stripe area in the lower left of the map. This is an aerial image of the neighborhoods in each section. These charts show the net changes in enrollment and functional capacity, along with the estimated impacts that these schools will see once ACE Center impacts are accounted for. As students from every high school attend ACE programs off-site, the bottom chart estimates functional capacity in the respective school after students attending ACE programs outside the building have been accounted for. This provides the most realistic assessment of the numbers of students typically in a building on any given day. In total, Freeman is estimated to have a net reduction of 129 students, placing the school's functional capacity at around 97%. After ACE, Day 1, the functional capacity is brought down to 93%, and Day 2 sees that figure at 94%. Godwin would have an estimated net gain of the 129 students, placing the school's functional capacity at around 93%. After ACE, Day 1 and Day 2 sees the functional capacity brought down to 90%. JR Tucker High was also requested for review by multiple members of the board due to the recent history of capacity concerns at the school. Section 1, seen in the light orange stripe area in the center of the map, includes moving students in the Bonnie Bray, Glenside Woods, and Worcester Place neighborhoods from Tucker to Hermitage. Similarly, Section 2, seen in purple, includes moving students from Tucker to Hermitage as well, including the Westchase Townhomes Development. Section 3, found on the far left of the map in green, includes the crossings at Short Pump moving from Tucker to Godwin. Finally, at the request of Ms. Cancela, staff considered the Broad Meadows neighborhood. This pocket, identified as Section 4, seen off of Gaskins Road in dark orange, would move from Tucker to Glen Allen in this scenario. This reverses action taken in 2017 by the board to move the neighborhood from Glen Allen to Tucker to address capacities concerns at Glen Allen that existed at that time. Later, you will see a corresponding scenario that moves this neighborhood from Holman to Hungry Creek for middle school. This is an aerial image of the neighborhoods in Sections 1 and 2 for this scenario. This is an aerial image of the neighborhoods in Sections 3 and 4. For this chart, the net changes in enrollment and functional capacity are shown for Tucker, Hermitage, Godwin, and Glen Allen. All functional capacities listed are prior to ACE Center impacts on Day 1 and Day 2. Starting with Tucker, this scenario has an estimated net reduction of 370 students, placing the school at 85.4% functional capacity. Hermitage has an estimated net gain of 280 students, placing the school at 98.3% functional capacity. Godwin has an estimated net gain with Section 3 of 19 students, placing it at 87.5%. And lastly, Glen Allen has an estimated net gain of 81 students, placing it at a functional capacity of 106%, with Section 4 moving into its zone. Of note, these capacity estimates reflect only the changes in this Tucker scenario. This chart shows the ACE Center impacts on these four schools for this scenario. Tucker is estimated to see an overall functional capacity of 85%, while Day 1 and Day 2 would see it brought down to 82%. Hermitage would be at an estimated overall capacity of 98%. Yet, as it is the school with the largest student population attending the ACE Center program, those Day 1 numbers are at 90%, and Day 2 is at 93%. Godwin is estimated to be at 88% in this scenario, with Day 1 and Day 2 figures being at around 84%. And Glen Allen is estimated to be at 106% in this scenario, and Day 1 and Day 2 figures are around 103%. Ms. Cancela also requested a scenario that moves the Broad Meadows neighborhood into Hungry Creek Zone from Holman Zone, as seen in Section 1 of this map. This reverses action taken in 2017 by the board to move the neighborhood from Hungry Creek to Holman to address capacities concerns at Hungry Creek that existed at that time. This is the same area that moved from Glen Allen to Tucker for capacity release reasons during 2017. For this scenario, the net changes in enrollment and functional capacity are shown for Holman and Hungry Creek for this move. In moving Section 1 from Holman, that places Holman at 72.4% functional capacity, and an estimated net reduction of 76 students. Hungry Creek, on the other hand, would be gaining those 76 students, and would have an increase to 92% functional capacity. Mr. Young specifically requested that Hemarico High be reviewed due to the recent history of low enrollment at the school. Specific neighborhoods in this scenario were requested Specific neighborhoods in this scenario were requested for review by the board as well. Section 1, seen in the orange stripe area in the top center of the map, includes moving students in the Chamberlain Farms and Lakeside Terrace neighborhoods from Hermitage to Henrico. Section 2, seen on the lower center of the map in purple, includes moving students from Highland Springs to Henrico, which impacts the Central Gardens and Woodville neighborhoods. Finally, Section 3, found adjacent to Section 2 in green, includes the portion of the Fairways Development that is currently zoned for Highland Springs, moving to Henrico. This is an aerial image of the neighborhoods in Section 1, those moving from Hermitage to Henrico. And this is an aerial image of the neighborhoods in Sections 2 and 3, those moving from Highland Springs to Henrico. For this chart, the net changes in enrollment and functional capacity are shown for Henrico, Highland Springs, and Hermitage. All functional capacities are listed prior to A-Center impacts on Day 1 and Day 2. Starting with Henrico, this scenario, along with the seats slated for the new Cyber Security Specialty Center, has an estimated net gain of 480 students, placing the school at 87% functional capacity. As we don't know which year the board would want this scenario implemented, this assumes 150 seats, or 75 per grade level, for the Cyber Security Center. 150 seats reflects the absolute maximum possible enrollment in the fall of 2027. If implemented in 2026, the maximum enrollment possible would be 75, which would reduce the overall functional capacity to 83%. Again, these are all projections; there is no historical data for this center, given that it's brand-new. Highland Springs has an estimated net loss of 67 students, and Hermitage has an estimated net loss of 171 students, placing these schools at 87.4% and 75.5% functional capacity, respectively. Of note, these capacities reflect only the changes in this Henrico scenario. Moving along to A-Center impacts for these three schools. Henrico is estimated to see an overall functional capacity of 87%, while Day 1 and Day 2 would see it brought down to 83% and 86%, respectively. Highland Springs is at an overall 87%, with Day 2 at an estimated 81% and Day 2 at an estimated 83%. Hermitage would be estimated to have an overall functional capacity of 75%, and is still the school with the largest student population attending the A-Center program, which brings those Day 1 numbers to 67% and Day 2 to 70%. While staff has shown you each of the three high school-level preliminary scenarios as their own standalone action, we also wanted to provide the board with an overview of how the high schools look when all three are implemented simultaneously. The chart on the slide shown displays the net changes for each of the seven high schools that could be impacted should these scenarios move forward. Two of these schools are impacted by more than one scenario, specifically Godwin and Hermitage, so it is important to note that these figures will not match prior slides for their estimated enrollments or functional capacity percentages. We've gone through a lot of figures today, so as a review of overall functional capacities of these schools before A-Center students are adjusted for from the capacity. Freeman is at 97%, Glen Allen is estimated at 106%, Godwin is estimated at 94%, Henrico is estimated at 87%, Hermitage is estimated at 93%, Highland Springs is estimated at 87%, and Tucker is estimated at 85%. And for the board's convenience, here is a chart displaying Day 1 and Day 2 estimated functional capacities for all seven potentially impacted high schools. Again, please note that Godwin and Hermitage will differ from previously shown slides, as they are impacted by two scenarios each. The board asked staff to prepare a timeline that plans for final action in December, so that clarity can be provided to families and schools well in advance of any changes that might be effective next school year. The proposed timeline here supports that request, and would give families clarity before course registrations open, so they can plan accordingly. Once staff receives direction about next steps, we are prepared to quickly organize in-person community meetings and deploy online surveys in September and October. This would allow the board to review all collected input at your October 23 meeting to inform subsequent board discussion in November with a potential final deliberation and decision at the December 18 school board meeting. In alignment with the board's requested timeline, staff proposed town hall meetings this month and next, as well as online surveys. Some proposed dates are noted above for your consideration. Citizens would also have the opportunity to provide feedback to a dedicated email inbox, online surveys in multiple languages, and/or participate in the public forum portion of the upcoming school board meeting. I will now turn the discussion over to Dr. Cashwell.
Thank you. First, I want to acknowledge and thank Ms. Rachel Thayer, our division's planning specialist, for the presentation and all of her work in preparing this content. I'd also like to thank other members of our team who have assisted in preparing information for this board request. Board members, you have been presented with a great deal of information today in response to your specific requests, and I appreciate your careful consideration of potential boundary adjustments. We recognize that there are nuances and challenges with each scenario, and that these proposals involve significant change for some schools and students. Thus, I want to note that should any board action result in changes, the division would prioritize in assisting in smooth transitions for any impacted students and families. And in cases where the result may be a significant shift in enrollment size to a school, division leadership would carefully consider programs, resources, and staff allocations, as is done in advance of every school year, to ensure that we are considering each school's unique needs. Conversations about change are never easy, and so to assist you, the school administration and I are prepared to answer questions as you consider what, if any, scenarios presented today would be pursued. Mrs. Shea?
Thank you so much. Thank you, Dr. Cashwell, and team. Whoa, numbers. I love numbers, but even for me, we have a lot to digest. And I know this is something we committed to in the spring, so it wasn't an unexpected request of your team, but it's still a sizable one. Ms. Thayer, you are an encyclopedia of all things planning in Henrico. You know student yields, projected timelines for development, how rooms in each building are utilized. This is your wheelhouse and expertise, and we, as a board, are excited to have someone who knows Henrico inside and out to be interpreting this data for us and bringing us possible solutions. So, thank you. As mentioned earlier, the board would like to have a decision, if possible, before winter break, so that students know what their zone school will be when going into course selection, specialty center decision, applying and auditioning for special classes, and more. We are also committed to spending time engaging with and hearing from the community on this, and how to best serve our students, schools, and communities. So that together, in a push to get these proposals out at this meeting, and on behalf of the board, I deeply want to thank you, our planning team, Dr. Cashwell, and her cabinet, for your unwieldy work to get these together. We have a lot to dig into, too, together, board, and so I want to keep our discussion kind of as structured as possible, so that we can make sure that we're hearing each other and getting through what we want to. So, we're going to, I want to start with just any clarifying questions that you have about what was presented, or some context that you would like to provide for your requests or the proposals that came up in your division. And then, so each of us will go through that, and then we'll go through these questions that Dr. Cashwell has shared with us, one at a time, to work down these decision points. Any kind of questions on how we'll generally structure this? All right. So let's start with general kind of clarifying questions you might have, or some context you might want to provide for your areas or scenarios. I will start with you, Ms. Atkins.
So, thank you, Chair Shea. I want to start with just a few reminders and dive into a little bit of context as we move into this discussion. So, as we consider shifts in school boundaries, it's important for us to remember what this truly means for families. Their routines, their children's educational journeys. These decisions are not abstract; they touch real lives every single day. So just as a family is moving to a new home that takes courage, it takes thought, it takes patience, and adjustment, and so does shifting schools. So, students and families must rebuild connection, trust, and that sense of belonging that makes a school a community. So I'm hopeful that we let that resonate, because of, under the outstanding leadership of Dr. Cashwell, the division has done its part. Gathered the data, they mapped the possibilities, presented the facts. So, in my opinion, the director from this board is complete. So, thank you, Dr. Cashwell. Thank your team for their diligence, their clarity, and dedication. And I also am going to shout out to our principals, our educators, our administrators, and staff that rise each day to share their gifts, their knowledge, and their hearts with our students. So when it comes to this discussion on boundaries, the responsibility and the true stewardship rests with us, this Henrico County School Board. We must ensure that families are seen, heard, and included. Their voices, their experiences, their choices must help us guide our decisions. And this is not only about numbers; this is about the story of each school, its culture, its history, its students, and its communities. It's about understanding neighborhood changes, tracking population shifts, planning for new developments. It's about staffing, programs, environment, and all of those things that make these schools unique. It's about measuring outcomes, the ones that are invisible, the ones that are tangible, while navigating state and federal mandates that, in my opinion, to often disrupt progress and undermine trust and reduce our children to test scores. And yes, I said that part. Yet, despite these barriers, we continue. We continue striving for clarity, stability, and for direction. We work so every student has not just a seat, but a second home, a place to learn, a place to grow, to build relationships, and to succeed. And it is not lost on me that today is September 11th. Here we are, 24 years later, and I remember the lives that are taken, the moments that changed us, and the quiet strength that many of us, including myself, are carrying forward in this chapter in our book of life. So colleagues, I believe this. If we hold fast to holding each other accountable, if we lead with compassion and listen, listen deeply, we will get this right together. So now I'm going to dive on into some of the scenarios that you put on that screen, Chair Shea. Thank you for your grace. So, looking at the Highland Springs and Fairways Development, this particular scenario would be families moving into new homes, and as they move into those new homes, they would be enrolled into Henrico High School, and I'm very comfortable with that beginning in the 26th school year. That is one for consideration. The other one regarding Highland Springs and Central Gardens, and for those of us that just say CG, I'll just use that for moving forward. We would be considering, starting with rising 9th graders for the 26-27 school year, students currently at Springer Nation stay at Springer Nation, and I look forward to seeing you graduate across that stage. I also look forward to hearing the feedback from all the considerations that have been presented today. So that's just a small overview of what we've seen so far. Mrs. Shea, for clarity, you're going to go through each of the questions that you presented here after each person gives context, correct?
Correct.
Outstanding. That concludes my context of overall remarks.
Thank you so much. Mr. Young, clarifying questions and/or context?
Is that your way of keeping me on task, Chair Shea? Rachel, thank you so much for this presentation. Dr. Cashwell, your team as well. I will begin with kind of piggybacking off of Ms. Atkins when it comes to the eastern portion of Henrico High School, dealing with the Fairways community, which is a new community that will be, in this scenario, now feeding Henrico High School, correct? And then, along with the Central Gardens, I understand that Ms. Atkins would love for the rising 8th graders to start, as far as timeline is concerned. But my question that I have for you, Rachel, is looking at the numbers that's coming from Highland Springs and the Central Gardens area, if we can get that pulled up. Is that 67?
Yes, sir.
But the 67, that wouldn't be 8th graders, would it?
That would not be 8th graders, no.
Do we know what the 8th grade number would look like?
We do, and I can get that for you. I want to be exact, and I don't have it in front of me.
Okay, because I think that's important to note, that we know what 8th graders in that scenario that Ms. Atkins pointed out, what would be moving into Henrico. I would say this, when I started this, Henrico High School has the lowest capacity in the county, so it's an opportunity. And I think it's a really good opportunity to help with the development in the east, and then the overcrowding issues that we see to the west. And with that being said, I would like to shift to talking about cybersecurity and then the western portion that we're getting ready to discuss and go through. The cybersecurity portion, 75 students is the first wave, correct?
Yes.
And then the second wave would be the following year with another 75.
Yes, sir.
So the 150 that I'm seeing is a two-year number?
Yes.
Not a one-year number?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. All right, and then, let's see if I had any more clarifying questions. The Helios community, are those numbers factored in anywhere?
The Helios community is fully built out at this point in time, so we are expecting student yields to occur this fall. So as soon as we have those numbers for current enrollment, I will be happy to give you the student yields from the Helios community.
Okay, but nothing projected right now?
Nothing is projected right now, due to the fact that they are going to be currently enrolled right now.
Okay, and then there's another community right down the street, I think it's Town Homes, that's being built. Are you familiar?
Yes, those are factored in, because they have not reached full buildout.
Okay, so they are factored in as an estimation?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. All right, and it was a slide where we predicted 1.9% enrollment. Do we know what part of the county that we're projecting that 1.9% increase?
That is throughout the whole division. At this point in time, we don't have specific areas pinpointed for that, due to the ever-changing forms of residential development. It's a little more difficult to pinpoint.
Okay. And when I'm looking at 171, this would be the students coming from Hermitage, potentially moving into Henrico High School.
Yes, sir.
But that number does not factor in our students that are currently enrolled in specialty centers.
Yes, sir.
So ideally, that 171 I'm looking at would be lower.
Yes, these are all very conservative estimates. We are expecting these to be lower due to specialty center considerations, but as we don't know what students in what areas will be attending specialty centers in the future, we are going with the highest number possible.
Okay. Overall goal, it should be balancing enrollment across our division. So, Madam Chair, I don't have any further questions. I might have a redirect, but I wanted to talk about specifically what I brought to the table, so.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Much appreciated. Mr. Irving, clarifying questions and/or context?
Thank you, team, for the presentation. It's, this is a, I would say, a massive undertaking to just compile all of this information, and I can't imagine the countless hours that it took, so I thank you for the work that you all have done. I think it's very important to point out that these are fulfilling a data request submitted by this board. This is not a division recommendation; this should not be interpreted as Dr. Cashwell saying we need to do these things. I would be remiss if I did not mention that, because I think, I don't want there to be a misrepresentation that this is the division saying these things have to be done. This is, we asked for particular things to see, because we were curious about what it looked like, and that has been given to us. So I want to be very straightforward with everybody, that this is our decision to make. We are the body that is empowered by the state constitution to make this decision, and we will do so in conjunction with our families and our communities, and I believe our staff should be included as well, because the staff have a vested interest in these schools. They work there, they pour their blood, sweat, and tears into these kids, and to think that they should be removed from the picture, I think would be wrong as well. I think that as we move forward, we should also exhibit humility. we should also exhibit humility in what we believe that we can accomplish. I think that trying to, you know, think that we can fix some past wrong is probably an ill-conceived notion because I think that presumes that we believe that what we are doing would ultimately be the best decision for all time. So I think for me, I want to be very data-driven because our families deserve that on up-to-date information that accomplishes specific tasks. And for me, that's capacity. I think that, you know, moving families is an extremely difficult thing, and we should not do it unless it is necessary from a capacity consideration. You know, I, I appreciate the data that was gathered on my community, the Jackson Davis scenario, the Tucker scenarios. Just upon first glance, it looks like that would absolutely accomplish, you know, the capacity reduction that Tucker deserves. I'm going to have further comments as we get to the questions later on. But I just appreciate this work that has been given and done for us so that we can hopefully make the best decisions that, you know, benefit our communities.
Thank you, Mr. Irving. Ms. Consella, clarifying questions and/or context.
I have a clarifying question to begin with. From what Mr. Irving just said, perhaps Dr. Cashwell, you could provide the clarity or Ms. Thayer, that some of the recommendations in the presentation are actual division recommendations with new capacity? Or am I misunderstanding? Because I want to be real clear on with new capacity, Long and Jackson Davis specifically.
Yeah, the board asks that we look at how to utilize that new capacity in the scenario you've seen is what we've prepared for you to consider, yes.
So nothing, some are division recommended or no scenarios are division recommended?
I think that...
I just want to have clarity on that.
Yes, some of these address capacity generally, which was the board ask at our last meeting, and looking at new capacity. And others address specific requests that were a bit more nuanced that members had related to specific areas in their districts. So we've tried to accomplish both looking at capacity issues. Like you see, the Tucker scenario noted as they are significantly over capacity as an example of that. And then both Jackson and Davis, Jackson Davis and Long and Rather as well. And then the remaining scenarios specifically speak to things board members wanted to see and study in their areas.
Thank you. Ms. Thayer, the extent to which you have worked, I know specifically with me and other members in recent weeks, is thank you very much. Your support is greatly appreciated. I have lots of comments and feedback on really the whole presentation. Is now the time or should it wait until the question piece?
Well, we'll go through those. Ms. Burton, would you mind showing the questions at the end? We'll go through those systematically. So if they pertain to some of those questions at the end, maybe hold there. But I want you to be able to ask any clarifying questions about the data presented, but also give context for some of the things you may have requested now.
Okay, well, then I'll give, I'll jump right in and I guess give more context for the Moody request, which is slides 22 through 27. And we'll start, start on slide 22, where I get to thank you, Ms. Thayer. I appreciate how the rebalancing of zoned NIB, middle-years program students, resolution of feeder pattern inconsistencies, and actual proximity to middle schools is presented for resolution for both Holliday and Johnson. I would like to think that, oh, this resolution is complex. It's one of the most complex scenarios the board is looking at for a reason because it's programming, which involves Dr. Cashwell and her team looking at program, programmatical adjustments and boundary adjustments or solutions are board. So it's, it's special that we, we finally, I can say I finally get to do this. I've been waiting six years. I would like to think that it was not the original objective of the IB program to displace 62%. Let me repeat, 62% of zoned students from Moody. Both Holliday and Johnson families have driven their children past the school they should attend, which used to be Moody many moons ago, to go to Brooklyn for way too many years. While it's undeniable the IB middle-years program is a good one, the program at Moody is and always has been twice as large at Moody versus the other two programs offered at Fairfield and Tuckahoe Middle. I would hope my colleagues and the Henrico Schools community realize this is neither fair nor equitable for my Brooklyn District community. To that end, I fully support the phasing option on the slide that's responsive to six years of advocacy from my Holliday and Johnson communities, and it gives respect to the Brooklyn community after great consultation with Dr. Cashwell and the team about how this phasing option would work. I see the projections for growth are conservative, which means the resulting capacity, are we expecting that, this is a question, to be lower than shown on slide 27 as we balance out the programs? Or are we expecting the resulting capacity? No, on the phase options? On the phased approach?
These are conservative estimates. So while the numbers used are larger than potential, this does also start at 2027-28, which is the first year of the DLI program.
Right.
So we would expect an increase just for DLI seats.
Right.
However, again...
Which most are by Holliday, I mean, it's Holliday feeder pattern anyway.
Yes.
Okay, thank you for that clarity. I just, for me, it resolves something that has not been resolved. It's gone unchecked in my, in my district for decades. Not only would it balance the programs, but it was resolved feeder pattern inconsistencies and restores proximity and actually going to a school in your community versus driving past it every single day. That's the only, I think that's the only really comment for context I wanted to make. Well, I guess I'll go one as part of the Tucker solution. Let me see. I would like to give context for the 2017 pocket, if now is the time, is now the time, Ms. Shay? And that is slide 31.
Would you like to see the table?
I'm going to start, I was just going to start here and then go to slide 35. You can just start on slide 35 if you'd like. But actually, before you do that, I need you to just look at the map of the pocket. And I realize it was a middle school capacity issue. And just a caution, I guess, for what we're doing as everyone has said, you know, thoughtful, thoughtful moves that don't unintentionally displace folks that, I mean, when you look at the map, it's, why are they not going to Glen Allen High School in Hungry Creek? I mean, I get it, it was a capacity situation in 2017. And to be frank, the community has been advocating for years for the reversal. But since the board paused the comprehensive redistricting of 2019, 20, that has not yet been possible. So, but this community, the Broad Meadows community, has been advocating for years to reverse this feeder pattern. And as your numbers show on slide 35, the 81 high school students would take Glen Allen High School to 106.3, 3 capacity before the day one, day two option. But not even the ACE programming at this time makes a feasible reduction that makes this option possible. But I owe it to my community to show it, to show that I shared it with my colleagues and Dr. Cashwell and the team. And we really did try to find a way to make it work. But what is possible is slide 37. The Broad Meadows community was displaced to Holman in this pocket move. Capacity does exist at Hungry Creek. And I would like to recommend that this neighborhood be reunited in the feeder pattern at the middle school level back into Hungry Creek. And then I would also like to ask Dr. Cashwell that for you and the team to monitor this particular high school feeder pattern into Glen Allen as we move forward at such time as capacity at Glen Allen allows for this feeder pattern to be adjusted. Please bring it to the board's attention for consideration. Thank you so much, Ms. Thayer. Chair Shay, that's all I had to clarify this time.
Thank you, Ms. Consella. I will move to some items in my area. I'll start with Quiacassin. If we could look at the main map, the big map. And so really, the driving concepts here for me are community cohesion in light, in utilizing the opportunity of this new bond project opening. Some background information, as you mentioned, Quiacassin currently feeds from seven elementary schools and into three high schools. Also, Tucker feeds from five middle schools with no core feeder pattern. And this is something that the principal at Tucker and the PTSO president actually met with Ms. Consella and I back in 2019, right before we came on the board, to explain the challenges that this brought, how much they love the community they serve, but the lack of cohesion, having any sort of core feeder pattern can really bring challenges in building community. That also impacts a wide range of things from academics to extracurriculars and that sort of thing. And so that advocacy has been going on for many years and helped us understand that. And then also, at Tuckahoe Middle School, there currently is a slice of about 10 to 15% of students who are pulled from the rest of the feeder pattern that goes to Freeman, and those students are pulled from Tucker. So just kind of setting the stage there. I've heard advocacy about trying to unite and untangle some of these feeder patterns for both of the terms I've been serving this district. And then just recently, the Henrico citizens shared some thoughts of citizens in my district about this, that students feel like they're starting back at square one whenever they started a new school or breaking apart from friendships. You lose those friendships and you lose momentum. So really looking at how can we, how can we make this better for all of our students and all of our communities in this area? A little bit of historical context about how we get here. I won't go way back to the 19th century. But I will say, so in, in 2009, when we did our, the last true comprehensive redistricting in Henrico, significant areas that were attending Tuckahoe Middle School at the time were moved into Quiacassin. And that includes areas like David, Davis Elementary, Skipwith Elementary, and Ridge Elementary, which are geographically around and behind Tuckahoe Middle School. That move is what created the three-way high school split at Quiacassin. And it create an imbalanced split at Tuckahoe Middle School between Tucker and Freeman, as I mentioned before. And it also added Quiacassin into Tucker's feeder pattern of many, many middle schools. This proposal adjusts some of those communities from the 20, or 2009. Those communities that live actually adjacent to Tuckahoe Middle School, like Skipwith and Davis. I mean, it adjusts them back into Tuckahoe Middle School. Those are the communities that currently and would continue to matriculate to Tucker. And then, but it also balances with some of those communities that were moved then staying at Quiacassin. For example, the Quiacassin Road corridor from Ridge Elementary. A version of this proposal actually came forward from the community south of Patterson Road while we were discussing in 2019 and 2020 suggestions on how to keep the community together as we were looking at comprehensive redistricting there. As we know, that was halted. Another version of this proposal came forward in 2021, 2022, when we were looking at hotspot adjustments. You may remember, there were some elementary school adjustments up in the Colonial Trail area as well as looking at how to use the new capacity at Holliday. And, and a similar version to this was looked at at that time. As the board listened to the community at that time, we decided to hold on any of these adjustments until the new school opened, knowing that we had a new queue coming down the pipe. Well, here we are with the new school coming. So at that time, when we were talking with the community, with the community about that, some other considerations that came forward about this proposal, specifically from the Mayberry Community, which is that area south of Patterson Avenue, is that if this was pursued, they had a desire to stay together as an elementary school community. So not for the elementary school itself not to be divided between middle schools or high schools. They had a desire to all remain at Freeman High School together. And they had a desire to have access at the IB program at Tuckahoe Middle School, which at that time, they would have had to drive to Moody. All three of those things have been accomplished in this proposal. So let's talk about the action and the results here. All right, the first action of this proposal, it takes students who traditionally matriculate through Quiacassin to Tucker from Davis and Skipwith and has them attend Tuckahoe and, and then on to Tucker. So Ms. Thayer, I believe that's section two, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. So section two. So the result of that is that it removes Quiacassin from Tucker's feeder pattern, reducing Tucker to four feeder middle schools. But even more so would give them almost 50% of zoned students feeding together through Tuckahoe Middle. So it would give them a core matriculation community. Another result from that is Quiacassin would no longer break between three high schools, currently Godwin, Freeman, and Tucker. It would then just split between Godwin and Freeman. Another result is that Tuckahoe Middle would split more evenly between Tucker and Freeman instead of just an isolated pocket of a handful of students splitting off from the rest. Another result is that Freeman would be comprised of a more even mix of its middle schools, Tuckahoe and Quiacassin. Instead of, I did a little back-of-the-envelope rough calculation that currently it's about 75, 25. And so that would be a more balanced composition. And then also, it keeps capacity under, and then, so in order to move all of that in, something's got to move out. And so that's where Mayberry moving out comes in. But it allows Mayberry 100% together as an elementary school community, not being fractured, to move together to the new Quiacassin and then continue to matriculate into Freeman together at 100%. The next pocket, which is the, sorry. The, another action which I'll come back to for Carver. Oh, sorry. The next action is section four, which is the green section up there. So this proposal takes the rest of the Carver students. Carver is currently broken between Quiacassin and Pocahontas, and it unites them into Quiacassin. So that's the action. The result unifies the Carver community all the way through middle school and Quiacassin into high school for Godwin. So that's 100% feeder from elementary to high school. It balances the new capacity at Quiacassin while giving some space at Pocahontas where there's some development happening around Pocahontas if you've driven that area recently. And it also better, gives a better composition of Godwin from its feeder middle schools. Again, back-of-the-envelope rough calculations, I had about a 75, 25 between the two middle schools that it currently feeds from. And this would give it about a 60, 40 balance between students coming in. So that's, oh, and then I, I don't want to forget section number three. Section number three up there is a one or two... Section number three up there is one or two apartment townhouse communities?
Yes, it is one apartment community.
That actually go to elementary school at Colonial Trail. And so it takes them to Pocahontas, which is geographically much closer, and then lets them matriculate with the rest of Pocahontas to Godwin. So that's clarity why that little pocket was also included. That's the most I have to say. But I am also going to touch briefly on Carver and Freeman. So if we can go to Carver, please. All right, so Carver, the driving concept here is relief with new developments and geographic proximity for transportation. So it's not a huge yield of students that live there right now. However, we know we possibly have some more development coming along, along that Patterson Avenue corridor. The citizen covered that, I think this week or last week. So some pending UMU coming up just south of Patterson. And so before shovels get in the ground, it allows some relief to both Mayberry and Freeman to move those communities up to Carver, which is geographically closer, and then could follow their matriculation pattern to Quayacason and Freeman. So that's the Carver piece. And then Freeman, the driving concept here for me is capacity relief for Freeman, utilizing community pockets that can be reunited, or at the very least, not creating additional splits within elementary schools. So, excuse me, this is a little bit different than what was proposed back in the spring. So if you look at section one, section one is the remainder of Pemberton Elementary School, which is currently split between Godwin and Freeman. Most of Pemberton goes to Godwin. It's that section there, that section one, that goes to Freeman. And about a third of that section is actually the building of Quayacason in Pemberton. So that would allow that elementary school to be unified. Also additionally, you see the little blip across to the right. That includes some new development that was just announced to be breaking ground soon. And so then preemptively lets us go ahead and move it over before shovels are in the ground to provide, as to not put even more capacity on Freeman. And then the section two is part of Pinchbeck, the only part of Pinchbeck west of Gaskins that doesn't currently go to Godwin. Pinchbeck is split between Godwin and Freeman. And then section three is that part of Carver we talked about before. So again, looking at how can we reunite communities as we provide relief to Freeman High School? So doing that by uniting Pemberton Elementary and changing the split of Pinchbeck a little bit between Godwin and Freeman, but not a huge skew where it becomes an awkward sliver on one side or the other. All right, so that is my context. Thank you for your patience. Any other clarifying questions before we get to the specific, the specific items? Mr. Irving?
Yeah, so I did have a couple clarifying questions. One pertains to, well, they both somewhat pertain to the Moody situation, the Moody scenario, and how it impacts Tuckahoe Middle School and Brooklyn Middle School. So what, could anybody give us an idea of what our IB application trend is in terms of how many students around the county are applying to IB?
Ms. Coy may have that.
Good afternoon. I have a little bit of data about that that I'm happy to share. I have this year's application numbers, and I can grab those. One moment. Okay. For the fall of 2025, the sixth grade applicants to Fairfield were 210, 601 to Moody, and 284 to Tuckahoe. So those were fifth graders last year who were applying for the fall this year.
And if I might add, depending on where you live depends on where you would apply. So any fifth grader wouldn't just be applying to one or all, based on this.
Yeah, and the reason I ask is because of the 105-seat allocation that would be going from Moody to Tuckahoe Middle School, which, if I'm reading this correctly, in combination with the Quayacason recommendation, not recommendation, the Quayacason scenario would bring Moody, I mean, would bring Tuckahoe Middle School to almost 100% capacity. And that's on top of the rebalancing of IB seats that's already happening with expanding the seat load at Tuckahoe Middle School. And I find that concerning that we would just be doing a scenario where it would push one middle school to almost 100%. Moody would still be at over 100%. That's, that, it would be. I'm, I'm in the middle of talking, please. So that's concerning to me, given that Tuckahoe Middle School is one of the schools in my district. And, you know, I think without that IB seat rebalancing, it looks like they would fall around 91% capacity. Another question that I did have about Brooklyn, because it looks like it would be a massive reduction of about 22% of the student population. Being a teacher, I know that, you know, when, if you were to see such a reduction in the amount of students in a building, you can't logically have the same amount of staff serving that population, because that would be, that would be overstaffing. What would the implications be, or do we know what the implications would be with Brooklyn Middle School being an IB, being an opportunity school, and those teachers on three-year contracts for the opportunity school? What would be the impact of that with the student reduction? Do we?
I would generally say that with the opportunity schools, as they've come on board, we've let staff know that's a three-year commitment, and in good faith on the part of the division, that based on the data and their selection point, you know, even if data points change throughout, throughout the year, that that's a period of three years where the additional supports would be available to the school and that additional compensation, which is what I believe you're speaking to. We would want to continue to hold true to that, to do right by our employees. To your point about shifting allocations, you know, certainly a significant reduction in students may mean reallocation of staff. We would want to make sure, though, that we were holding to the opportunity school supports given to Brooklyn. And, you know, I will turn it over to Mrs. Bolden if she has anything more to add. I mean, staffing can be complicated, and we monitor enrollment every year to make sure we're rebalancing staff. For example, a school may have more than expected students enroll, another had fewer, and then we would transfer teachers accordingly. Mrs. Bolden, what did I miss, and do you want to speak to generally, should any of these impacts occur related to redistricting, what the HR considerations may be?
The only thing I might add is that if a teacher is transferred to a non-opportunity school, they would lose the opportunity school stipend. So if that's relevant to your thought process.
That is relevant. I would be concerned about doing that to staff. And I think, you know, if we're going to see Tuckahoe Middle School increase in student capacity, they would require more staff. If Moody's going to increase in capacity, they would require more staff. But then it would be probably pretty fundamentally unfair to remove teachers from Brooklyn, if we can even do that, to go fill an allocation at a school that now has much larger student population. That leaves me, you know, very concerned. Like frankly, that concerns me a lot, because I think the whole point of the opportunity school model is to provide stability to those buildings. And if you have a 22% reduction in students, it's hard from a financial and fiscally responsible standpoint to just have that much excess capacity of staff within a building. And I think that leaves us with a, with a, and a bit of a pickle, frankly. And so I did just want to ask about that, because I think it's, it's worth discussing and considering very, very seriously. Yeah, that's all I had.
I would like a redirect when it's appropriate. Mrs. Cincella?
I would like for Ms. Thayer or Dr. Cashwell, the reallocation of seats into Tuckahoe is a division initiative unrelated to the proposal for Moody that I've asked for.
Correct. We began last school year upon the application process to look at balancing the number of seats available for NYPD Middle School Year Program IB at our three IB middle schools. Part of that was at your direction. You noted the imbalance, that's something staff studied carefully, certainly as Moody was the first, I believe nationally, to come on board. It's a large program, it's a robust program, and certainly a wonderful asset to the school, as you pointed out. But in size, was larger compared to the other two. Part of that is capacity concerns, but where we had the capacity, we worked to grow those seats. So that's exactly what we've done. We've increased the number of seats at Fairfield available, so we have more students increased in our enrollment there over the past years. And that's been wonderful, because as you heard from the numbers of applications for all three programs, there's high interest. And then we increased seats at Tuckahoe and actually shifted some of the students who would have applied to Moody are now applying to the Tuckahoe based on, program based on where we live. So that's phased over a few years, and you saw that reflected in the data. And so, you know, certainly, those shifts were set to occur regardless of the proposals made here, those particular shifts in what I would call balancing of the programs.
Thank you for that clarity. And then, much consideration, I mean, I've listened to my community even before I was on the board, about 62%. Think about that, 62% of a zone Henrico County public school, 62% of the community that should have, should go to that school drives past it every day with their tax-paying parents. Families drive past the school every day. If I don't bring this forward, who will? Who will try to do the right thing? It is never wrong to try to do the right thing. And I've also consulted in great depth with Ms. Thayer, as well as Dr. Cashwell, giving great consideration to Brooklyn Middle School. Ms. Thayer, can you, and the opportunity school resources, which is why phased option has been put forward? Ms. Thayer, can you speak to some of the growth that will come into Brooklyn Middle School out of the Route One corridor? You're much more versed in that than I am.
Yes. So currently, Brooklyn does have about 85 anticipated yielded students from currently worked-on developments that are reaching build-out within the next two to three years. So we do have some expected growth, and those yield estimates are about 85 to 90 students.
Thank you for that. But much thought, I mean, I just want my colleagues to know, much thought and consideration has gone into every single thought about Moody. I thought about Moody all summer long, and my Johnson and Holiday folks, I mean, I cannot reunite the Johnson feeder pattern 100%. I tried. I looked at getting Johnson instead of driving past Moody into Tuckahoe. That was not feasible. I have a split that will remain there, 29.8% of Johnson community going to Tuckahoe with, you know, that's less than an ideal split. 70% does go to Brooklyn, but they drive past Moody to go to Brooklyn, as they have for years. Same with Holiday, half of Holiday drives past where the rest of Holiday goes at Moody to go to Brooklyn. I'm trying to reunite community and feeder pattern and honestly raise the attention that one of the centers, it is, it's a great program, but it's 62% of my school, our school. And I just don't think that's fair or equitable, and someone needed to say it out loud. Thank you.
Ms. Atkins?
So I appreciate all the effort, Mrs. Cincella, but I'm going to be very blunt that I disagree. I, and I disagree for many different reasons. It is difficult to drive past a school to get to another. It is difficult to go to McDonald's and get something to eat when you're not used to eating fast food. There are a lot of things that are difficult, but perhaps our understanding of the word ethical is different. A designation that reflects HCPS's commitment to addressing staffing challenges or providing specialized resources is titled Opportunity Schools. That's just a very quick definition. Reassigning 300 families and reducing Brooklyn's functional capacity to 53% would have serious implications, not just for Brooklyn, but for all of Henrico County. Reason being is that there are existing opportunity schools that have seen resounding wonderful success. That level of disruption is beyond concerning to me. I think that families are going to face hardships with that move. I think you're going to have decreased engagement, something that this board and communities and staff have worked very hard to increase in morale. Very hard. And we're going to continue, because that is what we do at Henrico County Public Schools, is listen and perform as best as we can. I just understand that we have staff, this leadership team, working tirelessly to overcome staffing and resource challenges. Tirelessly. And the way that opportunity schools work is to give them time. And if you want to put a timestamp, we need at least three years. So to do this to Brooklyn, I just don't understand. And I'm hopeful in this conversation that you will provide more of your understanding, because I can give you mine, because my district has the majority of them. And they would fail if I do what you're attempting to do in this moment. I think that when I think about words like equity and ethical and systemic actions, I do not take them lightly. I know that your heart is in the right place. I've been on this board at the same length of time as you, and you've been fighting, and you are a champion. However, this move, I don't think is the right one. And I think that we got to remember our why. We have to remember our why. Our why should be, it should be a reflection of what our communities have asked for, which is what you stated. But our why are these babies in the school. Brooklyn is designated as an opportunity school so that they have more opportunities than those that already have the resources. It's a way to help schools do more. And when you know more, you can do more with more resources. If Brooklyn has been an opportunity school for five or six years perhaps, but not giving your school the time that's necessary is a miss. I do not think this proposal should move forward for many reasons, but I want to pause with the few that I've given you now, and perhaps you can share something that I do not know.
Well, actually, I believe the public has the right to give feedback on scenarios. So to remove this at this time, I believe is not just for the community that I've been listening to for six years. The opportunity, I spent great time with Dr. Cashwell talking about the impact to opportunity school, which is why phased in option exists. This is year one for Brooklyn. Next year's year two, and then year three. It will, each year, capacity can be phased over to Moody. And the opportunities at Moody, which is why I praise the program, the, I do not believe that the students being moved would be disadvantaged, because they do have access to school-wide IB at Moody, which is shown from Dr. Cashwell and team, the result IB at Moody, which is shown from Dr. Cashwell and team, the results that the students achieve by being able to participate in classes that the IB program offers. It's shown great increases in these subgroups. Dr. Cashwell or team, could someone speak to that instructional, the benefit? And then I'd just also like to say, I'm not doing it to Brooklyn. I'm suggesting this be evaluated for Johnson Elementary School and for Holliday Elementary students. There are great benefits for them at Moody as well.
So you're speaking to phasing in students. At what point, I'll be honest, all of our schools deserve to have the very best resources. And the goal is to work to get them there, Brooklyn too, Brooklyn too. And I hear what you're sharing with me for students. Talk to me about resources and your phased-in plan to address the resources.
Since Dr. Cashwell or the team would handle operational and instructional, I don't want to put words in their mouth. Dr. Cashwell, I mean, we would have resources, and there are benefits to the cross-curricular opportunities at Moody and the IB program for non-IB students.
Can I intervene? I want to get a couple, couple things in real quick, because Brooklyn Middle School, although the name would insinuate it's in Brooklyn District, it's in Fairfield District. So let me speak to my school for just a second to provide context as well. And I will say this, I visited Brooklyn, beginning of the school year, I was there. Me and the principal talked for maybe five minutes, because he was doing a lot. But the one thing he said to me is, Ryan, we are fully staffed for the first time since I've been here. And that's due to it being an Opportunity School. They are fully staffed at Brooklyn Middle School. And when we talk about school-wide IB, I want to talk about the kids that are in this proposal being removed from Moody, which are kids that live in my district. And when we talk about school-wide IB, we're talking about those students, I believe it's 81, that will be losing resources. They will be losing school-wide IB. And as I understand it, at Wilder, even though we have the GAZA program, students do not get to take part in the GAZA part of the program unless they're labeled as gifted. Correct, Dr. Cashwell?
That is correct, related to GAZA.
So when we, when we, when we talk about this Moody shift, let's not forget about the kids that will be leaving Moody and losing that resource. And that's truly concerning, because Henrico High School is also an IB program, and they have seen tremendous success with kids being integrated in whatever subject that they're strong in, being able to take that course in IB. My son benefits from that, the community benefits from that. And by shifting these 81 students from Moody into Wilder Middle School, I feel like they would be losing something. I don't want that to get lost on anybody up here, that there is 81 students that would be losing the school-wide IB, and they're doing tremendous at Moody Middle School. So I want to add that context to this discussion, Dr. Cashwell, as you answer Mrs. Cincella's question.
Certainly, and I hope I haven't lost track of the question, which I believe was related to the benefits of Moody IB to the full school, right? And so, and I think you alluded to this, Mr. Young, related to Henrico High School as well. Our IB programs are shifting from a program-only model to the school-wide model, which while there are certainly some unique hallmarks of students enrolled in the specialty program, all students have the opportunity through some unique course collaboration and access to that content. And we have seen significant gains in student achievement for the non-program students, if you will, that have reached across the school, both at Henrico High School and Moody, related to the benefit of that school-wide IB program. Certainly, when it comes to resources and opportunities from school, they do differ school to school, depending on the unique nature. For example, we've just talked about one of those being proximity to a program. In this case, I've mentioned IB. The same could be true for a number of programs that are housed in our schools. And then we know the Opportunity Schools program is unique, and it's data-driven to put the right supports in schools related to incentivizing staffing and additional supports built in conjunction with the school leadership at the time to really meet the community's needs. So certainly, our Opportunity Schools have supports above and beyond, which you might see in another school, that are tailored to not only attract staff where there are typically staffing challenges, and that's that additional stipend, but some additional built-in supports. That probably looked different Opportunity School to Opportunity School, because we do really try to design that in partnership with the principal.
All right. Team, thank you so much for digging into a lot. We have a lot to consider on a lot of different levels. We have roughly nine proposals, each having different sections, and so you could multiply that out to whatever number you would like. But we have, we have a lot to be considered over the next months. So I do want to pivot to these questions that have been posed for us to guide the rest of our conversation together and be able to give the community what our direction forward will be. So the first question is, of the scenario shown, are there any that should be eliminated from consideration at this time? Ms. Cincella, I'll start with you.
As I just said, that I believe Moody should remain on the table. If it needs to evolve, I am open to collaboration, continued collaboration and creativity. But 60, let me just highlight, 62% of my community is displaced, and I am respectful of Brooklyn Middle School, Mr. Young and board colleagues, I am. But I am also trying to reunite feeder patterns in my district that are inconsistent from elementary to middle to high. And also trying to be responsive to advocacy that I've been receiving for six years and working with Dr. Cashwell for six years. Because when I came on this board, 62% or more, actually, was a large part of the school. It's shrunk slightly, I think, from 65 or 64. They used to call the non-IB students in Moody NIBs. So I've been working with, that would be nine IB students, NIBs was their nickname from the IB population, which was the majority of the school, it's over 64%. So I've been working with Dr. Cashwell and the team on this initiative for a long time. The expanded school-wide access to IB helped that school community, and not to mention, you know, Principal Dos and the amazing leadership team at the school. They helped fix that community cultural fit. So I've been working for years on this to finally get to the place where it could be programmatic, which is Dr. Cashwell, and then boundaries, which is the board. And then Glen Allen High School, I already spoke to. I would like for the Hungry Creek piece to remain as an option, because capacity does exist there for the Broad Meadows community. And I asked Dr. Cashwell and the team that at such time as capacity does open up at Glen Allen High School with matriculation patterns and the day-one, day-two ACE impact that she notified, bring it to the board for consideration. It just, at this time, taking Glen Allen High School to 106%, it's just not feasible. So that piece.
Yeah, so that 81 students, I believe it is, to Glen Allen High School, to remove that from consideration at this time. I know it's been important to you, and we'll keep it top of mind, especially when we have Fairfield Elementary opening in a couple of years, and we'll be digging back into some of these discussions. So, all right. Mr. Irving?
I would also like to remove the, I guess it's Section 4 in the Tucker High School, the ones that would be going to Glen Allen and putting them to 106 capacity. I just think that doesn't make sense. It would be doing the opposite of our stated goals. And then, as, you know, as presented, I just cannot see myself being able to support the Moody scenario. I just, there's two high schools that would be at or over capacity, two middle schools, and then one middle school that would be taken severely under capacity with concerns about staffing and how that pertains to the Opportunity School initiative. So those are the two that I would seek to remove at this point.
Thank you. Mr. Irving, Mr. Young?
I would also agree with Section 4 being removed, taking GA over, I guess, 106%. And for those same reasons, I would also like to see the Moody Middle School play removed as well, based on the same thing, the capacity at one school reaching 100, while severely under-capacity school at Brooklyn Middle School.
Ms. Atkins?
Removing Tucker-Glen Allen scenario would be one. And then the second is absolutely the Brooklyn scenario. That would negatively shake the core of its structure across Henrico County to move forward with that. So those are the two that I would like to see removed from consideration.
All right. It sounds like we have consensus for her to eliminate that Section 4, is that what we're, the 81 students from, that would move into Glen Allen High School. It also sounds like we have consensus that not to move forward with Moody as presented today.
For clarity, Mrs. Shea, what does not to move forward with Moody as presented? Would my colleagues consider hearing from the public and then collaborating and communicating and being creative to find a solution for the Moody, for the Johnson Elementary School and Holliday Elementary School communities in my district? Would the board be amenable to that?
I think, here's, here's what I know, that what was presented is not feasible structurally for the mere definition of an Opportunity School. My recommendation would be for us as a board to continue to find pathways forward before bringing something like that forward to the public. So absolutely continuing to work to figure out what we can do, and once we have that figured out, then bring that back to the board.
Mr. Young?
Yeah, I would echo the same sentiments, because foundationally, it doesn't work for me. So I can't see putting the public through something that I'm fundamentally, right now, not amenable to based on what's presented to us today.
Yeah, I would, I would echo that as well. If we have a proposed meeting date on the, on the presentation for September 18th, I just highly doubt that there's a turnaround time that's feasible for a scenario that we could actually bring, and this scenario is not one that I'm, I'm comfortable with. I just, I ultimately wouldn't be able to support it, so I don't support putting the public through something that, you know, it appears that three of us do not support.
Colleagues, as we continue to think on these things with further redistricting, further boundary adjustments coming our way, we know that the policy, as it was adjusted this spring, all the dates run together, this spring has us evaluating things at least every four years, but we know we have bond projects coming up before that. So I would like for us as a, as a board to commit to continuing to look at these solutions that, and the concerns that Ms. Cincella has brought up, continuing to dig into programmatically boundaries and those sorts of things on how we can continue to move the vision forward of what she is advocating for, for her district. But I hear you that in terms of this round of boundary adjustments and coming up on July, not July, September 18th, we just don't have the runway for another approach for this round. So that would be eliminating from consideration for this process, the 81 students to Glen Allen and the Moody as presented. Thank you. All right. Next question is, what implementation timeline is desired for each scenario? So to translate, we're looking at kind of the start date in which we would want to implement this. As a reminder, for the new schools opening, if that's helpful, new schools opening Davis and Longan in 2026, Kuyakason opening 2027. Anybody want to start this one?
I can go.
Mr. Irving, thank you.
Yeah, I, you know, especially as it pertains to Tucker and the other high schools, and as it's capacity-related, I do feel that it should be done by the next school year. If we are taking seriously that there are capacity concerns that need to be addressed, then there would be no reason to wait on them.
All right. Any, so I hear Tucker 2026 from Mr. Irving.
Yes.
Anything else you feel passionately about?
I, my reading is that the high school ones would have to be, would ideally be taken in tandem as those schools interchange students, so I, I think that that would be reasonable.
Right. Same thing, the western portion of the district, which is the Chamberlain Farms area, the feeder pattern from, changing from Hermitage to Henrico, would like to see that 2026. Coincides with the Tucker move to Herm, Herm to Henrico. And then when it comes to the eastern portion, I would be in support of the not moving any of the students currently enrolled in Holland Springs for the Central Gardens area and waiting for the eighth graders to move in. And I believe I want the eighth graders to move in next year, 2026. And then fairways should be implemented in 2026 as well. Did I skip around too much for you, Chair? Did you get it?
That's correct.
Okay.
Rising ninth graders to begin 2026, fairways beginning 2026.
I jotted notes, but our superintendent writes faster, and there's a recording, so we'll, we'll note that. Ms. Cincella?
Let me see. Very excited about new capacity. I have to shout out Longan and actually the programmatic recommendation as the needs in our community and the proximity with, in location closer to pre-K. I know when we opened up Holliday, as Mrs. Shea said, that we took advantage of, of that space, because near and around Holliday did not require any boundary adjustments at that time. It was, and then much the same, I feel much the same about Longan. Just, I just have to support the programming at this time, however, versus moving boundaries, because we do need additional pre-K space. And nearby elementary schools are not currently too far over or under capacity as they were when, I guess, we were last talking about the bond, before bond referendum 2022. So matriculation has changed. So I do support programming. As to Tucker, yes, fall 2026. And since a portion of the recommendation is moving 200 students out of Tucker into Hermitage, I like that it provides Tucker relief, and it's going to resolve a few inconsistent feeder patterns for both Dumbarton and Holliday by sending them to Hermitage 100% in their feeder pattern. But due to the unexpected growth and potential instability, is there any way to, I guess it's a capacity play, so there is no way to phase it, because that needs to be immediate, which would, for things into Hermitage and folks moving out of Hermitage, it's my, it's my understanding, capacity needs, relief needs to happen. I do want to help provide that. So this, I guess, would be fall 2026. I request additional funding for resources and supports be guaranteed for Dr. Jackson and his team to ensure success for the students and staff currently at Hermitage and for the 280 that were moving in. And then I think it's 171 that are moving out. I am concerned about my community with that, though I understand Mr. Young's interest in growing his own enrollment, and I do support it at Henrico, since we're speaking timing. in growing his own enrollment, and I do support it at Henrico, since we're speaking timing. A few things come to mind. I wonder if there's any chance that the current unexpected growth in the Route 1 corridor will impact any of these feeders being moved again. And then, given the unexpected growth to Henrico, since it's on the Tucker page, or are we going to talk about it separately? Because I do want to ask, or at least highlight, unexpected growth into Henrico of 408 students by moving, I think it's 258 in, in combination with the cybersecurity center of at least 150 students initially, is there any way to phase any of that? I do worry about growing a school intentionally fast.
Let's, yeah, let's talk about, yeah, let's talk to phasing when we get to the grades, perhaps? Is that okay? And just looking at years to begin.
Okay. But it's not going to be broken out into grades, really. I was thinking, traditional timeline scenarios, not picking and choosing. I was just thinking traditional timelines.
Would we be able to have the all-high school preliminary scenario ACE impacts up on the screen? I just think that would, I just wanted to see something.
Did you like, want to wax poetic on that, or shall I? Did you just want to look at it?
Oh, I just wanted to provide the context of what it would, I guess, look like after Day 1 and Day 2 at each of those schools. I think excluding the Glen Allen because that's, that one's not moving forward, so that number would be removed. But looking at Freeman, Godwin, Henrico, Hermitage, Highland Springs, and Tucker, Day 1, Day 2.
All right, when I look at these, Jackson-Davis, obviously 26 when the building opens, Quayacason 27 when that building opens, Freeman 26, capacity relief, Tucker 26, capacity relief, and some of the others, I defer. So I think that gives us a good starting place as we figure out what the implementation timeline for each of the areas that we are still considering look like.
Yeah, I've taken note of that and also want to acknowledge Mrs. Consella's commentary related to potential, again, if scenarios are passed as presented here or in any other fashion that increases enrollment at Hermitage, increases enrollment at Henrico, to this extent or any lesser extent, we would certainly want to make sure that we're acknowledging any staffing supports, additional supports that may be needed. Because in some cases, these are significant changes in the upward direction while there's capacity compared to their current capacity today, and want to acknowledge that.
All right, team, last big question. Traditionally, grades 5, 8, 11, and 12 have had the option to remain at their current school once redistricting takes to effect. For this process, which grades would the board want to consider? I know I've heard some talk about Phase N, so Ms. Atkins, would you like to speak to that?
I would. I simply want to speak to Highland Springs and not the fairways development, but the CG Central Gardens development, that that starts with rising ninth graders. And to be very clear, that any Springer that is a Springer remains a Springer, and that in this consideration, it is only rising ninth graders. You're in eighth grade, you'll be rising to ninth, that would be going to Henrico High School, if that's what's passed when we vote. As far as the other grades and when that shifts occur, I defer to the four of you because that's where that impact really is.
Thank you, ma'am.
I would say that I would be in support of 5th, 8th, 11th, and 12th. You know, and I feel that this should apply to all schools. I don't think any one school should ever receive a favor above and beyond any other school, and I feel that 11th and 12th makes it so that students who are currently sophomores and juniors in high school would be able to remain if they so choose at their high school. I feel that being able to finish a school that you've been at for a little while is important, so it would only impact students who are, I guess, currently freshmen, if I'm, my math is correct. Yes, what's on the board is what I would support.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll jump in. Central Gardens, rising ninth, I support that. And then what's on the board, 5th, 8th, 11th, and 12th for our high schools and middle schools and elementary schools, I would support as well.
Ms. Consella?
Traditional, I support what's up on the board for traditional, 5, 8, 11, 12.
I support, so when we look at this, I think it's important that, you know, 5, 8, 11, and 12. I also feel real strongly, like Mr. Irving said, the importance of particularly high schoolers being able to finish where they have started, and like Ms. Atkins said, the ability for a Springer to graduate a Springer, for our other high schools as well, it's really an expansion to one additional grade when you look at it. I think what we're looking at for high schools, that's quite doable because these high school moves that are being considered are one directional, as opposed to some of them that are in and out, and so it shouldn't create a capacity pinch since they're one directional. I realize, especially with our capacity relief needs, that it dilutes the immediacy of the relief, but I also understand that numbers and that each one of those numbers represents a student and their high school experience. And so, yeah, so it sounds like we've got the traditional 5, 8, 11, and 12 as consensus. There's also some talk of phasing in for other areas, and so we can continue to evaluate those additional phasing considerations, but this has us at a starting place of our traditional grades. And so we'll continue to nuance both the implementation timeline as we engage with the community about the specific maps and the process. Yes, ma'am?
I have a question, since Hermitage is specifically part of capacity relief. So what does that look like, just for real clarity on the record? 10th, 11th, 12th?
Well, I don't think we're-
If you're a freshman, it-
Yeah, I don't think we're committing to-
I'm sorry, for Tucker, like, capacity relief, you will leave Tucker. Help me understand that. Or if you're 11th and 12th, you stay.
Correct. As it's presented here, unless it evolves otherwise, traditionally, if your school's own changes and you are currently, the school you're currently in, if you are going to be an 11th or 12th grader, you may choose to remain.
Thank you for the clarity.
So some things for us to continue to nuance on, kind of, implementation and that sort of thing as we engage with the community about our maps. So, it says, should staff perceive a perceived pros option for community input? I don't want to speak for my colleagues, but I know we've all said that community input's really important to us, that we made it part of our policy. We want to hear from the community. Some opportunities have been created, if we can go back to what those are. And so, proposed town hall meetings throughout the district, different parts of the district, September 18th, which would be a week from today, September 30th, October 7th. Dr. Cashwell, how will the location and time of those town halls be communicated to our public?
Should the board wish to proceed, we would go ahead and publicize those via Parent Square and would just note that the content would be covered the same on the 18th, on the 30th, on the 7th. So members could, you know, if they can't, I recognize that the 18th is very soon upon us, and, you know, would just say that all three of those opportunities would be available along with that dedicated email address for constituents who want to write in and provide feedback about anything that's listed here, as well as specific surveys to communities that would be impacted by any of these potential changes. And certainly, you know, would welcome any other ways the board would want to engage with the community.
Thank you. So just to sum up, what I have written as taking to the community for discussion and consideration would be Jackson-Davis, programming at Longan, Carver, Quayacason, Freeman, Tucker, Hungry Creek, Henrico High. Hi, Highland Springs, thank you. Corrections, clarity. Colleagues, I thank you for our robust discussion. As some of my colleagues put, this, the responsibility for us, according to the Code of Virginia for this falls on us, and so we take this matter very seriously. We know that this is hard. This is a hard topic. This is a hard topic to discuss amongst ourselves. This is a hard topic to discuss with our families and our communities. Some of us may or may not have students moving as well, but we are, and the easiest thing is to do nothing. But we are here because we care about our students, our schools, and our communities, and we want to do what is right by everyone. And so it is going to be an engaging fall, and thank you to each of you. Does that conclude your presentation?
That concludes items from me.
Thank you. All right, the next item on the agenda is the consent agenda, and there's actually only one item on the consent agenda. It's the approval of the property line adjustment for two schools. It has to do with the construction at the, pending construction at the new Quayacason. Any questions, comments, motions?
I move that the school board approve item 7.01 on the consent agenda as presented.
Moved by Mr. Irving, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Atkins, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. The property line has been adjusted. The next item on the agenda is public forum. Colleagues received written public forum before the meeting started. Those comments have been posted in Board Docs. The next item on the agenda is unfinished business. Colleagues, do you have unfinished business?
Chair, Shea, I do have two items.
All right.
So the first one, I want to give a living building update to the communities of Avina, Sandston, and Highland Springs and beyond. Thank you so much for your patience. I know that the excitement continues to build and is rising, so I want to give you a few updates. A small and meaningful groundbreaking ceremony is being planned, and that's going to be guided by safety considerations. Construction is set to begin in early October. Later on in October, we are also planning a community meeting, not only to share updates but to welcome your voices, your ideas, and your partnership as we move forward in the journey. Also, know that the division will ensure there is ample time for you to plan for that community meeting, and also understanding that this is a very unique construction project. This building will be a living lesson as well. So more to come, stay tuned on that. The second item is actually going back to a topic that was presented to us back in March regarding the implementation of a student representative on the Henrico County School Board. And under the Code of Virginia, Section 22 dot 1 dash 86 point 1, a local school board may adopt procedures for the appointment of student representatives from among the students enrolled in our public schools. The statute provides that such representatives shall serve in non-voting advisory capacity under circumstances and terms as the board prescribed. So this evening, I'm asking each board member to share their thoughts on whether to move forward with exploring this option, and I'll start with myself. I would like to see us move forward with exploring this option to see what's possible.
Colleagues, any one else like to share their thoughts?
Yeah, I'll step in. I don't see a problem with exploring it. I fully support exploring the option. It's not a vote or anything, but I would, let's see what comes from it.
Yes, I'd like to hear information, I don't know what that looks like, but exploration on student, student voice.
I'm fine with exploration as well.
All right, agreed. Dr. Cashwell, I know you have a structure for a student, a superintendent student advisory committee, so perhaps as you look at the structure of that, perhaps there's some best practices we can glean from that, or some synergies that could exist in the struc-, oops, excuse me, the structures that you've already created for student feedback. Also, board, as we are about to enter kind of our professional development season with VSBA, a handful, a couple of years ago, they had a seminar about student representatives, and a lot of the student representatives attend the conference, and they were able to share kind of the pros and cons, the pitfalls, what really gleaned genuine feedback and things that move the division forward. And so, as those of us who are attending the conference, I think as we do that, I think that's a great opportunity to engage with other divisions, to kind of pick their brain about it. I think it could look very different from a small division that only has one high school, where it might be easier to choose one outstanding student to be the voice, where we have the challenge of having 10 high schools, and you know what that looks like. So there's definitely a lot of pieces to noodle here. I know we all highly value student voice, and so I think between working with the superintendent as to what synergies might be in the system she has in place, and then all, and then us also looking at what other divisions have done and have worked, like, let's adapt it for Henrico but not reinvent the wheel from scratch, if that makes sense. And so I think it's an opportunity for all of us to do some, some learning and some digging and be able to authentically elevate student voice. So thank you for bringing that forward, Ms. Atkins. Other thoughts? All right, the next item on the agenda is new business. Any new business? The final item on the agenda for this evening afternoon is the announcement of upcoming meeting dates. Our next meetings will be, well, is it the 18th, or should I say the 24th?
The town hall meeting, yes.
Okay.
And it will be noticed.
Okay, so our, our next meeting will actually be a week from today. It will be our town hall meeting, the first of our town hall meeting, date, sorry, date selected, time and location to be determined and communicated and noticed. We look forward to you being there. Have a good night.